Order this meeting for Monday, June 8th. Carl, can you give me a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Looks like he's present. Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Here, present.
Johnson.
Present.
Bunsoness.
Present.
Olson.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which I am, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
First order of business will be to approve last week's minutes for the meeting of June 1st and also for our special meeting, which I don't see listed, but I expect that we had some minutes for the 5th.
We'll have that at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of June 1st?
Move.
Second.
A motion from Remley and a second from Olson. Carl, give me a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we have open forum. We've got one registered speaker who is Ms. Tiffany Langer, our city councilwoman-elect. Tiffany will be telling us about live streaming meetings, so Tiffany make sure the...
Do I have to do anything here? Or is it good to go?
Especially if the green light's on.
Okay. So clean. Tiffany Langer here. I just wanted to come by and thank Hub City Radio. We've got two gentlemen here behind me doing some live streaming right now to their Facebook. So, one of the big things that I've been excited about is getting these meetings out to the public more accessibly, more instantaneously, so that they can see what's going on on Facebook Live, on possibly Hub City Radio's website Live versus having to go to YouTube after the fact. So, I've been really big about having this stuff accessible and transparent, so I just wanted to show you guys what that might look like, and I'm hoping that this can continue for the near future and forever. So, that's all I've got.
Who would want to miss these thrilling meetings, really?
Right. It's been all the rage lately, so that's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
Sounds good. Well, congratulations on the election and look forward to working with you in the future, and thanks for bringing this idea to light.
Yes, thank you, and thank you to Hub City Radio.
Mayor, mayor?
Councilman Bunsoness.
Before Tiffany leaves, I saw an email from you, Tiffany, today regarding the flags choices. Can you just do a brief explanation of that?
Yeah, so part of our bid process with the Chamber, CVB, and Downtown was bringing them the idea of a flag. So, where I'm from, in Topeka, Kansas, they did a big flag campaign years ago, and they got the community involved and let them be part of the process, and it's really gone over well there. The nice thing about having a flag is it allows you to do a lot of branding without words. So, part of the process talks about, you know, keeping it simple, not having a ton of color options, and making it where a child could draw it from memory. If you look at the United States flag, it doesn't have any words on it. It's very symbolic. Sioux Falls also does an excellent job with their flag. I encourage you to look at that. You can buy a dog collar with a flag on it. You can buy bandanas. You can buy hats. They do a lot with their flags. So, part of what we did was encouraged those organizations to look at bringing a flag to Aberdeen. So, we've gone through the process. We had people vote on words. We then took those words and turned them into colors and symbols, and what you guys saw was what the public will see tomorrow, and they will be able to vote on which flag they'd like of the three options, and then we'll have a new flag. Because Aberdeen has not, regardless of what people think, a seal on a flag-like fabric is not actually a flag of a city. So, we're hoping that you guys will get behind that and get excited about having another option for Aberdeen.
Thank you.
Tiffany?
Yeah. Am I done? Yeah, okay.
As far as I'm concerned, you can be done.
I'll say it. I'll say it.
Next, we'll move right along to the consent calendar. We've got approval of a single item, three bullet point lists, all advertisement forbids. Can I get a motion to approve our consent calendar?
Move to approve it. Second.
Got a motion from Johnson and a second from Rife. Carl, can you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got possible first reading of ordinance proposing a comprehensive amendment to the Aberdeen Home Rule Charter. Ron, are you with us here?
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Council, I provided you in the agenda packet the council action request that sets forth the proposed charter revision ordinance, and typically these council action requests are something that you review, but I did want to basically cover it for you folks so that everybody out there who's listening knows what it is that the charter, the proposed charter amendment ordinance would do and when it potentially would be acted upon by the voters. The charter revision is something that was required because it has been over 15 years now since the charter's been reviewed, and a comprehensive revision and review is being proposed by the subcommittee, which currently consists of Councilmen Bunsoness and Ronane. And the proposed changes to the charter are set forth in the ordinance that was included with the packet, and those changes, and I want to go through those so that there's no confusion as to what those are, but it would comprehensively amend the multiple provisions of the Aberdeen Home Rule Charter, and these would be put together in a single measure to be accepted or rejected by the voters at the November 3rd, 2020 election. The primary proposed change to the Home Rule Charter is the elimination or modification of obsolete language regarding the transition in 2004 from the old commission form of city government to the current city manager form of government. There is quite a bit of language within the charter dealing with that transition, and this proposed revision would eliminate a lot of that transitional language and clean that up. The amendment also revises when council member salaries would become effective. Right now, we have an anomaly within the charter where any increase in a council salary would have to be delayed until the council member is elected, the next general election. Problem is that we have staggered terms, five different, five-year terms by our nine council members. We have different staggered terms, and so it would be nearly impossible for those to come online in a coherent way, and you could have people that would serve nearly the entire terms without getting a salary increase while other council members would receive the salary increase. Finally, the ordinance does a lot of housekeeping, and that housekeeping is to delete certain provisions within the, and modify certain provisions within the charter that have, either have typographical errors, some redundant phrases where there's a lot of just repeated language. Also, formally, we are looking at deleting the requirement that a conveyance or lease of city land for a period of longer than one year be by ordinance. That's an unusual and unnecessary step. That can typically be handled by resolution. Also, we would clarify the offices of the finance officer and the city attorney to make clear that they're both appointed and supervised by the council. And then lastly, you would have significantly, anyway, you'd have a requirement that the appointed council members, in the event of a vacancy, would be under the same conditions of the office as an elected council member. For the public's edification, this has come before them in a couple of contacts. We've got work sessions, a public hearing. There have not been any substantive changes to the ordinance since we, since the proposed provision, since we initially put those out last year in 2019. And so, with the, I believe with the imprimatur and approval of the charter revision subcommittee, we are recommending that the council adopt the proposed ordinance and take this for first reading and then second reading, and then there is a timeline that was provided with the packet showing when this would eventually come to the voters for their approval or rejection, and if approved, then it would be effective 30 days afterwards. So, we would be looking at potentially amendment in December of 2020.
Move approval.
Second. Got a motion from Bunsoness and a second from Johnson. So, I've got a question, Ron. So, aside from the salary increase aspect of this thing, is there any other change that would affect the way that business is done in terms of the city?
There is one change that would, it clarifies when roll call votes would be required. Right now, there is a requirement that roll call votes will be taken on anything other than a procedural matter, and you know, what is procedural is a very difficult type of on-the-fly determination to make. So, what this does, as far as just the business of the council, allows that roll call votes would be by ordinance resolutions, expenditures, appropriations, and money, which are required by state law, and of course, anytime a council member asks for a roll call vote, there would be roll call votes too. But that, there's really no other change in the business of how the council would handle itself or how it affects the council.
In terms of the salary increase component, there's no reason that the council could not get a salary increase. It would just go into effect currently after, upon the election of a new council member.
Well, that's correct. That's correct. I mean, a council salary increase can be voted on by the council, by ordinance, and once that ordinance would be approved, then it would go into effect at the conclusion of each acting council member's term. So, again, I think the concern was at the time, this was part of the discussion, was that you might have a newer council member who might literally be locked at a particular rate for four-plus years before they actually would ever see an increase.
Sure. Does anyone else have any questions for City Attorney Wager before we take a vote on this measure?
Yeah, I think the, the, the point here is this doesn't give us an, doesn't give the council an increase in salary. It is a mechanism that the, the council can use to set that salary in the future. History, 15 years of history, there has not been one increase in salary for the council, and I've been a strong proponent that that doesn't occur, but you know, this, that, this language, the existing language somewhat was the hindrance on that, not for me, but I think it's a good change. Councils typically do the right thing in these regards, so I don't see this ever getting out of hand.
Do you think that maybe the reason why it was set that way was to avoid the appearance of people giving themselves a pay raise? So, like, you could vote for pay raise, but it wouldn't affect you, it would affect your predecessor?
I, I, that could be the reason I haven't talked to anyone that set up this charter regarding that.
If you look, if you look back at past charters, this was actually copied from the Brookings and Sioux Falls Charter, and at the time, this was written, that language is, was in there, but that language is no longer in there for those communities. They go through a regular process of updating their charter, and I just want to say, as far as, this, this would, if, to increase any salary would still require two votes, still be referred to the voters if they decide not to, you know, hold us, our feet to the fire. And like I say, salary hasn't been a hindrance to me, but at the same point, I don't think, let's take Ms. Langer, who was just elected, that if we voted increase, she'd have to wait five years before that increase would take effect, and I don't think that is fair also.
Sure.
The comment I would make, if I may, Mayor, is this, this committee that assisted, or was with, worked with the city attorney to propose these changes, this process started in early 2019, and at that time, council member Hanson was a, was a part of that committee. I believe we probably worked harder, I think Ron probably worked harder, making these amendments than the original charter was originally drafted. It was not well drafted. There are a lot of, most of what we're doing here is housekeeping, and as Councilman Bunsoness pointed out, we are, we are creating a, a, or, more logical process for adjusting salaries if those ever wish to be adjusted.
Thank you, Councilman Ronane. There's no further questions. Carl, why don't you give me a roll call vote on the possible first read?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsoness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the possible first reading ordinance proposing an amendment to the outdoor dining of the Aberdeen City Code, possible first reading of ordinance, and I see that. Shelley, are you here to talk to us about that?
I am, with, of course, Ron's expertise.
Sounds good. Just make sure that the little green light is on. I'll have you lead into it, and then we'll give Ron's two seconds.
Well, I'm just going to hand it off to Ron. You've got all the answers, right, Ron?
Yeah, right. Easy to do.
No, actually, and I'll let Ron take it from here so he can explain the ins and outs of it, but basically, as the ordinance stands right now, anyone that does not have 51% of their revenue come from food is not allowed to have any alcohol out on what we're going to consider an outdoor dining space, so in front of their business, and that's the ordinance change that we'd like to take a look at tonight and make an adjustment to, so that it basically allows anybody that holds a beer or wine permit or liquor license that is able to, maybe doesn't serve food, maybe they serve a little bit, whatever it might be, would be able to have an outdoor dining space with the requirements that we have listed, ADA compliance and all of that. And then a few other changes that were made to this that Ron can be in more specific detail on, just kind of clean up the language, make it a little bit more specific, so that we're breaking down barriers so that the businesses can have this, an option, but we also are very respectful to the area and making sure that people are safe and it's done in a well manner. So, that's, that's kind of the gist of what we're looking for.
Sounds good. Ron, what can you add?
I would like the council to have a little better handle on the history of this, at least as it came to us about over a year ago, I think, when Brody Mueller, a downtown property owner, had requested that the council look at expanding the outdoor dining definition to allow for, I believe it was a malt, liquor, distillery license, and at that time, there were discussions about potentially expanding it to include all on-sale alcohol licenses, and we did provide the Downtown Association with three different versions, frankly, of an, of a draft of the ordinance, and after going through their processes and their meetings, they, they elected to ask for the draft that would permit all on-sale alcohol establishments, and with that, then, we set about just making sure that we could make it so it makes sense, and there's, there's an important distinction here that I want the council to be aware of. Most of the cities that permit outdoor dining, or whether they call it sidewalk cafes or whatever, but they have a permit process that the merchant then goes through, and you have a planning and zoning typically department that'll review that and make sure everything's in place. We're trying to avoid going through permits again for people downtown, and so we decided that rather than permit it, we would be more clear in the language that we're putting in the ordinance, and then we would beef up a couple of items. One would be to require that the proprietor be able to show to, to a city official that they have general liability coverage that would cover their, their outdoor dining operation, and then because there's no permit, we typically like to beef up the penalty provision. So, we do have a violation, it would be a class-two misdemeanor, but more importantly, it would have a provision for people who violate more than once, and there would be a suspension of their, of their outdoor dining operation, and if it's, if it's an on-sale licensee who violates, then they could lose it for a year if they, if they violate twice within a period of three months. So, but this process has been very enlightening. We looked at cities within South Dakota to see how they do it. I think Lynn is very comfortable that we put in place protections that make sense for people who are imbibing alcohol downtown and making sure that everything is being done lawfully and safely for both the customer and for downtown pedestrian traffic.
Move to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion from Remley and a second from Councilman Ronane. I just had one question on the violation. So, the violation that you're talking about, Ron, the misdemeanor, that just goes hand in hand with the language that says, "in addition to the penalties for violation of ordinance"?
That's correct. That's correct, Mayor. It's the last provision in that ordinance.
And that, that could be anything from the people's liability insurance not being adequately maintained to the, or where do you see the biggest potential pratfall, I guess, for an outdoor business? What violations are you most fearful of?
Honestly, I think the biggest violations are actually ones that you, you wouldn't think of as much, but one is how the, how the furniture is going to be secured, for example. If we've got a situation where people are not taking care to secure their, their outdoor furniture, and it ends up blowing away or damaging some other property, that would be a violation. Now, these are the kinds of things that ordinarily wouldn't result in a citation, but it would give us the ability to say, if you're not going to be taking care of that stuff, then we're going to suspend your operation for a period of 30 days. These are the kinds of incentives that are, that work good to get people to comply without requiring that they have to go up to third floor planning and zoning and get a permit.
Sounds good. Does anyone else have any questions before we take a roll call vote?
I'd like to add something. Okay, who else? David, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just, so, does this really limit it to just the corner lots that have the jut-outs, or can, is there enough space in front of slackers that they could have a table and two chairs and still make the requirement?
Right, and that's pretty much what I was going to address here a little bit, and with regards to that, I can answer that and just, right here, if you look at, in section 7B, actually, it's now 7A. It'll be in 7A. There is enough room, because right now, we're talking about it, in number three, talking about the outdoor dining area being extended up to 60 inches from the facade of the structure, which is the front of the structure. So, there is, we have 114 inches on the sidewalk, so we do have enough space to have 60 inches, having it extend, something extends 60 inches, as well as have the minimum of the 42-inch clear space, unobstructed, for patrons to walk by, ADA compliance, whatever that might be. So, there is enough room right outside of everybody's storefront just on the sidewalk. The jut-out area, as it's stated in the ordinance here, would be available for use for those who have the abutting property. So, if the jut-out area is in front of their property, they would also be able to use that jut-out area, making sure that there was enough of a platform there, a four-foot landing area, so to speak, so that anyone in a wheelchair or anything like that can come up and have, again, that clearance there as well. So, there, there's that landing space that would be made available. The one thing that the bid board and ADA board would like to request would be a little bit different language added in to the outdoor area. When you're talking about 7A now on here, when we say that we have room for a table and having enough clearance out there in that 60 inches, when you're looking at it, regular tables are 36 inches, 36 by 36, and by putting one of those in front of a storefront and then allowing someone to sit down in it, I actually did sit down and try and measure myself, so I'm speaking from really scientific numbers here, let's just say, but, so we're getting another 20 inches that's basically needed for someone to be able to sit down, have clearance, and that does not include them, them standing up, pushing their chair back, everything like that. We have clearance, and we are able to do it, however, it only allows for, let's, what we'll call a two-top in front of each, each business. So, it would not allow for someone being able to have a table and three people at it, one with their back parallel to the street. That would not be, and that we wouldn't have enough room to do that if we continue to have in here that a rope and stanchions would need to be placed to demarcate the space. One thing that Carly from Colorful Creations, Carly Pocop, she had talked about whether or not we could demarcate the space by painting, somewhat that would look like a cobblestone type area that would indicate for the business, as well as any police officer driving by, like that could clearly see where the area was, the patron could clearly see where the area was that they can and cannot be. That would allow us for a little bit more space so that we could have more than just two people at one table, so that would be the only request that we would ask for some consideration in how we would demarcate the area.
Would you mind sliding that image underneath? Can we get that on camera?
Not sure exactly where I'm going here.
Mayor?
Councilman Bunsoness.
I would request that we hear from the chief and also Mr. Bill regarding that request.
Sounds good. Brett, are you on the call here? I can't see you in our little...
I am.
Oh, okay, sounds good. Councilman Bunsoness is curious to get your two sets from the zoning board.
I guess from my standpoint on the planning and zoning end of things, is we originally wanted the stanchion or something that was solid to demarcate that area because of ADA accessibility on that sidewalk. There's people, if something's painted on the ground, people are going to inadvertently push their chair back, and they're going to be inside of that area of the sidewalk that was at 42 inches that would be required for ADA. So, that's the reason that I'm kind of backing having something permanent, in essence, put in place so people can't just push their chair back and be within the walking path of the sidewalk.
Thank you. Brett, Chief McNeil, are you on the call?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It's my opinion and experience that enforcement's very difficult without having some type of a physical boundary, such as the ordinance mentions here, a roll-up fence, something like that. I think it's human nature sometimes that we recognize these things, and it keeps us in that particular boundary. I think people have a tendency to inadvertently wander over, you know, as it's described here, a painted surface or something like that. I think it would be very difficult for an enforcement standpoint if it was just a painted surface. I also think that passersby, in my opinion, as Brett is talking about, would feel more comfortable if there's that clear line of separation and that physical boundary, so that's kind of my thought process on that.
And Chief, you're primarily concerned with the consumption of alcoholic beverages, correct?
Could you say that again, please?
You're primarily, as it relates to the consumption of alcoholic beverages, was the reason why the enforcement might need to take place?
Yeah, that would be correct, that, you know, anyone consuming or leaving, or anyone outside of the perimeter, coming from a different area, different area, coming into that, that area that hadn't been, you know, sold an alcoholic beverage as well.
And I contacted both Brett and Chief McNeil and asked the same questions, but respectfully, I'm here for all the business owners, and I'm trying to do what I can for them, so I 100% respect their opinion on that, and whichever way the council goes, this is just, you know, something that we want to, we want to see happen in downtown and create a little bit more outdoor environment wherever we can.
Thank you.
Just one comment, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Bunsoness.
I'm, I will side with the chief and Brett on this. This is, this is a huge change from when we originally brought this forward in reducing that 50% of food to zero. I think that's, that's a big compromise by this council, because there were a lot of concerns regarding that, and I think that would lead us to having some kind of barrier to make the patrons that are walking down the street more comfortable. So, I will support it in the current form. So I will support it in the current form.
Can I, would anyone be interested in proposing a motion to make an amendment to adhere to Shelley's ideas? Otherwise, we'll just take a vote and the ordinance says it stands amended. Okay, sounds good. A motion and a second already to, for the first reading of this resolution, or excuse me, first reading of this ordinance. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Shelley, thank you very much for coming and presenting here to us today. Next, we've got the discussion and possible first reading and passage of Resolution 20 of 605, R, Extending Ordinance 200405, also known as COVID-19 Emergency Ordinance Number Three. Ron, few words on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you've seen this, I think, seven times now. And this is the ordinance to extend number three. And if you do not extend, then the ordinance would, emergency ordinance number three would automatically repeal tomorrow, June 9th. Otherwise, this is the continued resolution, I'm sorry, this is the continued language that you folks adopted through the task force. And I take no position on whether you approve it or not.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Bunson and a second from Ronane. Does anyone have anything to chat about before we take a roll call vote on this?
I would just, I would just say that look to Thursday for changes.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's for the public.
Taking advantage of that live stream already. Carl, I will take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
No.
Mayor Shawman?
No. Motion does, however, carry. We will move along to the request from Safe Harbor Foundation Board to place a purple toilet and informational sign on properties throughout Aberdeen during the months of July and August as part of the fundraising campaign. Possible approval of the request to allow the placement of the toilet. And here I find my beautiful wife, Kelly. And it looks as though Brett might have a few things to add as well. Kelly, what would you like to tell the council?
Well, the purple potty is back. Had some great success last year and we're hoping to actually have two make their rounds this year. Our thoughts are to have one that would tour the residential part of our community and the other to tour commercial businesses. We had really good success, really great feedback from everybody that got involved with it last year. We're hoping to put a billboard up and kind of see what we can do to grow our efforts this year as long as you guys are on board with it again.
Move approval.
Second.
Brett, anything to add from the city's vantage point?
Just the fact that there were no issues with this last year and we had nobody calling with concerns, so staff does recommend approval of this.
Sounds good. We've got a motion from Bunson and a second from Councilman Reif. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Aye. Does that work?
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Kelly, thank you very much. Next, we've got the ratification of the mayor's appointment, Sister Kathleen Bierny and Professor John Schaff to the Board of Ethics.
Move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion from Bunson and a second from Olson. Does anyone have any questions on that before we take a roll call vote? Carl, give me a roll call vote for the approval of those two positions.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the reappointment of Mike Erickson to the Aberdeen Airport Board for another five-year term ending in June 30th, 2025.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Johnson. I'll change you to Ronane to a second because in order of people speaking here. Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to approve special assessment abatements for the property and the city limits. Possible approval of the assessments to the amount of $23,429. Carl, tell us about those abatements, please.
We had a request from the Brown County Auditor's Office to provide abatements for assessments on two different properties, as you can see in your handouts there. And I'm scrambling to get my copy of the handout. I thought maybe Ron would pick up on this, but in essence, we, because of nuisance conditions, and Brett can testify to this, that we had to tear down two houses at the 317 Fourth Avenue Southwest and 412 First Avenue Southeast. We assessed the costs of the demolition of those houses to the properties along with the water disconnect on the property at 412 First Avenue Southeast. The county treasurer says that the taxes have not been paid and they want to follow through with tax deed sale on those two properties. But with these special assessments, they don't feel that they would be able to sell those properties because of the value of the properties as compared to the cost that the special assessments are. So they're asking us to abate those costs.
Thank you, Carl. Can I get a motion to make?
Moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Bunson and a second from Johnson. Do you have any questions for Carl? Top of the line here, otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got payment request for the 2019 dome cover replacement, A&amp;B Contracting LLC for the amount of $117,000. Possible approval of the final payment request. Bob, you're here to tell us about that dome cover replacement.
The project's been completed and that's, we're just waiting to make the final payment to the contractor. So if there's any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Move approval.
Got a motion. Now, I've got a motion from Remley and a second from Ronane. Did you have a question, Councilman Johnson?
I don't.
Councilman Olson, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, nobody's got any questions. We'll take the vote on that. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Thanks for coming in, Bob. Appreciate it. Next, we've got the payment request for the work on the airport projects. We've got four payments to discuss. We've got payment 22 for the master layout plan for the amount to Helms and Associates of $32,956.24. Payment number 20 also to Helms for taxiway seat with the amount of $4,576.84. Payment number eight for the aviation apron for $16,683.75. And payment number two for the taxiway to re-deconstruction in the amount of $64,288.27. Rich, are you here with us?
I am, Mayor. Good evening, council and mayor.
Thank you.
As you can see, these are all projects that we've got currently going on, the master plan and layout plan. The three portions of that are 93 and 96% complete. So we should be, we should be looking at finishing this up in the next couple of months. Taxiway Charlie, payment number 20, we're moving along on that. B&amp;B has already got some of the drainage piping put in. The payment number eight for the aviation apron taxiway geometry corrections, that is that project that is fully funded by the Fed that we received that $5 million grant on. And then payment number two is for reading, they've got quite a few materials moved on site and then there's still some materials over in B&amp;B's yard. So we need to get them paid for that.
Move to approve all four payments.
Second.
Thank you, Rich. We've got a motion from Johnson and a second from Olson. Any questions for Rich while he's here? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the bill list for the week of June 8th, 2020, as seen in your packet. There is no additions to this. We simply, bills listed in the packet. Can I get a motion to pay those bills?
Move approval.
So moved.
Got a motion from Olson and I'll give Rux the second on that one then. Carl, give me a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Johnson? Abstain. Abstain.
I said aye.
Aye.
Need to have a conflict of interest before I leave.
I wanted to stick it to the man.
Yeah. Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
You're up, Rob. Doesn't look like you're muted, huh?
Abstain?
Perfect.
Abstain, okay. I'm sorry. Couldn't hear. Councilmember Remley?
I know what he's going through. Aye.
And Mayor Shawman?
Abstain. Motion does carry. Next, we've got the payroll approval for the pay period from May 24th, 2020 through June 6th, 2020, and the city's share of social security, old age, and survivors insurance, retirement and health and life insurance. Can I get a motion to make payroll?
Moved.
Got a motion from Remley and a second from Clint Rux. And Carl, please give me a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunson?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawman?
Aye, motion does carry. I'm not sure, is Lynn, Lynn, are you here today?
Yes, I am.
There you are. Lynn, City Managers' Report, what have you got for us?
Thank you. I have good news for the city council and mayor this evening. City Finance Officer, Mr. Carl Alberts, has provided us an update on the city sales tax, which I placed a copy of this report within the City Managers' Report. The period from December to April, the city experienced an increase of 8.9% over the previous year. Keep in mind, we experienced a decrease in 2019. In addition, we don't know the long-term effect of COVID-19. I also found some other interesting sales tax facts that I think you might find of interest. On their May 2020 report from the South Dakota Bureau of Finance and Management, they do a dashboard report that kinda gives you an indicator of what's happening on a statewide basis. They gave some information about selected decreases throughout the state from a year-to-year period in comparison. And for example, they showed apparel and accessory stores down 41%. Hotels, rooming houses, camps, and other lodging places down 35%. Eating and drinking places down 21%. Here's the next piece of information that I think relates to us to a certain degree, too. They also showed selected significant increases year-to-year. Building materials, hardware, garden supplies, up by 20%. Food stores up by 17%. And so we were told long ago that they saw a shift in spending and we are starting to see some of it within our results.
Thank you, Lynn. Did you have something for this or for? Sounds good. Anything else for us here tonight, Lynn?
Aye. No, not at this time. Thank you.
Bunson, is there a pre-agreement statement here for us?
No, I just have a question for Chief McNeil. I saw through some notes that we had five or six officers that were quarantined till, most recently, I think it was maybe Friday. Is that, do we have any officers that are being quarantined at this point?
No, that's a good question. Today, I was notified that the timeline for each one of those officers that you noted in the City Managers' Report have come off that time period and are healthy and working. So thank you for asking that. We do not have anybody on active monitoring right now.
And they came off on Friday or did they come off on Monday? No, it did Friday, I think it was.
The report was to me today, so it would have been effective today.
Oh, okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reif has something to add.
I received a lot of requests this week to pass on a big thank you to Chief McNeil and the Aberdeen Police Department for your communication and the way you handled the protests last weekend. So it was noticed and very good job, Chief.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would just like to state that we did not do this by ourselves. There are many agencies that helped and I would like to thank, you know, especially